Okay, good evening. Let me call to order this public hearing. This is a public hearing for the purpose of considering a proposed lease from the town to the Ledgerd Fair Committee. So, the procedure for tonight will be that we will have the call of the public hearing, then we're gonna have a brief presentation on the proposed lease by Mayor's Assistant, Mr. Mark Bancroft, and then we have a section of time set aside for public comments. Later on tonight during the regular council meeting, this item is on the agenda under new business to consider the lease, and at that time, the council will consider the comments made at this hearing. So with that, Roxanne, may I have the call of the public hearing, please?
In accordance with Connecticut General State Statute 7-163E, the alleged town council will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, July 25th, 2012, in the council chambers, Town Hall Annex 741, Colonel Ledgerd Highway, Ledgerd, Connecticut, to receive comment on the following: A lease between the Town of Ledgerd, Board of Education, the Ledgerd Parks and Recreation Department, and the Ledgerd Fair. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be accepted. Copies of the proposed lease are available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours dated at Ledgerd, Connecticut, this 12th day of July 2012, as published in the New England Day on July 13th and July 19th, 2012.
Thank you, Roxanne. Mr. Bancroft?
Good evening. The lease that you have before you is very similar than the lease that we've provided in previous years. Minor changes have been proposed, and I'll just go over those very quickly because they are minor. We have taken out the Ledgerd Parks and Recs Department. We feel that that's a division of the Town of Ledgerd, and so it's a combination, Town of Ledgerd and the Board of Education. Further down, we've added the Galesbury and Juliette Long schools as parking areas. This has always been done, but the schools were never listed. We also removed Belander's Park as a parking area where the shuttle buses will be, you know, coming from. Apparently, that was a thought years ago, was never materialized. They've never used Belander's Park. We've assigned administrative control of the premises by the tenant shall be inside the fenced area and everything that is known as the fairgrounds, and we've eliminated the one driveway by the Ledgerd Center School. The date is August 16th and through September the 13th. That allows for sufficient setup time for the Fair Association to be working through, up to the fair, and then allows them, one week after the fair, to break down their things. So, that's the period of time. It's approximately one month. There was a typographical error in one. It was state, it was misspelled. And then, the one thing, the fair has always provided us with a copy of their insurance, and it's always been in the correct amount. We've just specified that it would be an amount of $1 million, and that they would have us as a named insured. It's always been done, it's never been put in writing. And then, finally, the biggest change of the whole thing is because of this new state statute that is out that requires a public hearing for every lease, I put in an item 12 that basically says, and the lease, this lease is only for a one-month period. So, you know, you'd have to have another public hearing in 2013, one in 2014. So, I just basically put some words in there that will suffice to say that the lease should be considered for a five-year period for public hearing purposes. So, the next one would have to be in 2017. It just didn't seem to make sense to me to have to keep coming back year to year to year, you know, with a public hearing and all that. So, that's the major changes to the lease. We have worked with the lease association, you know, on this, we have had conversations, you know, with them, and that's it. Nothing really changed too much in the lease. And it's for $1. We're getting rich. So, now we're thinking we're gonna pay Mr. Homberg.
All right. Thank you. Okay? So, we will now move to the public comments section, and we'll start with Sharon Wodecki.
Sharon Wodecki, 44th Downing Road. Ledgerd, you have the Galesbury and Juliette Long School, don't they also use the Ledgerd Middle School parking?
I don't know that answer to that question, Mr. Rose?
Yes, we do.
The middle school?
So, I think we should indicate the entire complex.
Okay. Yes, the high school's already listed.
Yeah, the high school's listed, but you said Juliette Long and...
And you want the middle school.
I want the middle school added, because I know they use the middle school.
All right. Yeah, well, there's also, I think, something in here that appears to be a, appears to be just a typo. I mean, it doesn't seem to make any sense. We have a sentence that says, "Provided that the tenants shall not use all of those school parking lots during the hours of 6:00 AM to 3:30 PM." And I, I think that is intended for during, during school days?
School days.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
Right, and the weekends of the fair, the weekend of the fair, they're gonna be using the parking lot until those hours.
Yeah, I mean, so the way it's read, and you get down on the Saturday of the fair and say, "Well, gee, between 6:00 and 3:30, you can't use the parking lots," that's clearly not what's intended. So, we just need to add the words in there somewhere that says, "On, on normal school days," or "Days when school is in session."
The school isn't in session, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
When it starts though.
What were the hours ago?
Six to 3:30.
Says that, yeah. It basically says the tenant can't use the parking lots.
Yeah, that's their means of hours, six to 3:30.
Okay. Without specifying...
On school days.
School days.
Okay.
Okay. Are there comments? Yes?
Mike France, 17 Gardron. The stipulation that you put in here for having the lease go through 2017, what's the vehicle to change the period, the month period, so the effective date, the end date of the lease is going to be each year? It's gonna be a different day each year? You specify starting date to this lease...
Right.
At the beginning, and then on goes for five more years, four more years. What's the vehicle to establish the start date of the lease? And then, up from 2016, 2012, you added 2012 into the...
Right, so the vehicle that starts that is the Fair Association and the town will meet, and, you know, will say, "Okay, what dates are you going to start? What dates are you going to propose?" Because it's basically one week following the fair, that's gonna change each year what day it is. So, the vehicle that generates that is the fact that come June, on our tickler, it says, "Prepare fair lease," and that generates a meeting, which generates the change of the lease.
Yeah, we're not saying this is a five-year lease.
No, the only thing you're saying is that 2017 is when we have to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, right.
Each year, they want to do a new lease, but we don't have to do a public hearing.
We're saying the renewal, the next year's lease is gonna be a continuation of this lease, so we're gonna change the lease, new dates, and update it, which is not gonna go to a public hearing.
Okay, so, to me, recurring is, is, there's no reason to do anything.
I think we put words in there that say, "For the purpose," as we said, "Yeah, for the purpose of Connecticut General Statute."
The statute says that if it's reoccurring, then you don't have to go to a public hearing. So, he's making it reoccurring for that period of time.
So, it's gonna be up to you each year.
Right, well, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public wishing to comment on the proposed lease? Now would be the time. Yes, Mr. Song?
Bill Song, 333 Upkingle Road, Ledgerd, Connecticut. There has been a lot of work between the town and the Fair Association and Ledgerd Fair in, on the supporting documents, and I just wanna thank everyone for their compromise and willingness to speak with each other, and particularly Mr. Ruggles for helping get everyone to a point where if we can come to an agreement, we have to start, continue the fair. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rose?
Lou Rose, 16 Senate Drive. My only comments are is that the changes that were asked of us to make, I think we met all of those. You have to understand, after running this fair for all the years that we have, we pretty much know the problems that we have to contend with. And that's where we wrote our rules and regulations, whether it be admissions, any venues as far as exhibited, so forth and so on. The changes that were asked, again, I feel that we met them as much as we can. Again, we still know what we have to contain, what we have to work with, what we're up against, and even the things that we haven't come up against, which, after 65-plus years, you'd think that you'd hit most of it, but every year, there's something different that hits us and throws us for a loop momentarily. But, the group that works behind this a year at a time, and this isn't a couple weeks that starts when the other one ends and goes on through, and they work very hard. And it's not really a big group. It's probably 20 or less key people that do this all the time. And with it, I commend them. At the same time, the changes that were asked, I believe we met most of them, or we met them in some way. Again, we still have our beliefs in regards to what we have to contend with, with 20,000 to 30,000 people on a weekend, and what people bring about that make us write rules. So, with that, I ask that what we had presented be accepted, because we feel that it's the best thing that we can work with, and we feel that it's workable for everybody. Again, I, I take this as a good time to express to everyone that if the fair is all volunteers, it always has been, and it probably will be. How much longer? Well, that's a tough question. Unfortunately, we don't have a line of people standing behind each of the people that are here tonight or that run it, so I guess we'll have to take that year for you. But, again, being that it is the biggest event that Ledgerd sees during the year, and we're very proud to be able to put that on and stand behind it, we hope that it will continue for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to you and all the members of your committee who put on the fair. We know it's a lot of work, like all the other volunteers in town who work hard and bring something good to the town. The rest of us do appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Is anybody else willing to, wishing to comment?
I think he said it right the first time, really.
Anybody else wishing to comment on the proposed lease? Seeing none?
Question's adjourned.
The public hearing is adjourned, and the matter of the actual lease will be taken...
One second, please.
Almost.
Just to draw my attention, Matt. On the, the lease, I, the way it's written and the way it covers the Ledgerd Center School, it, it sounds like it's taken out one of our gates.
The driveway into the school, he's saying to Ledgerd Center School.
Yeah, I think I can explain that, because I, that's an area that I, I can explain that, because that's an area that I rewrote. But, I can understand your point. Originally, it said the driveway there, and to me, that meant from the street up to the gate. I understand what you're saying, because the, the fairgrounds themselves are really closed by the fence, and it includes then the parking lot behind the school. That was my intent, is that be...
Yeah.
And I think there were words previously that said something about marked by the, the admissions gate or something like that. So, I could see what you're saying.
Yeah, the thing is that we go all the way to the end of the school. In other words, naughtily, because we have a fence over there, right, that we close the gates during the fair to keep people from coming in through that area. We have that area fenced off. So, we just wanna make sure that the entire school property and town property are all included in that.
And my only concern was the area from the street to the gate is really still town public property, similar to library property on the other side.
So, you're not taking the gate away, you're just saying that the town controls the property to the gate?
Yeah, from the street to the gate, and all, everything in front of the school, everything in front of the school on the roadside of the school is town property that's not controlled by the fair. That was all I was trying to get through there.
Well, we should get it right, because where this will become an issue...
Yeah.
Is when somebody falls in the parking lot around the driveway and files a lawsuit. Now, the question's gonna be from the insurance company.
Who's responsible?
I, I think there were words in there that we should, there's something about the gate, the gate leading to the fair, which wasn't ever...
We had all the information before, we were from the sidewalk inward, all the way around. That's the property that we list with our insurance company. Because the thing is, is that if we ask someone to leave the fairgrounds for any reason, right, we tell them that they can be on the sidewalk.
At which sidewalk? There's a lot of sidewalks.
The one in front of the school.
The one touching the school?
No, the one on the street.
The one out on the street?
On the street.
Yeah, that's, that's a bit of a problem, because that's, you know, I don't think you'd wanna have jurisdiction out there, because if somebody was disorderly out there, that's town property. We would call it town.
No, I'm saying that's, the sidewalk is not allowed.
No, I'm saying everything from the sidewalk is into the school, the driveway.
Well, we have to, because we have parking. All our handicap parking isn't from the school.
And motorcycle parking?
Right.
You have a similar situation on the other side by the library, where you have a town cul-de-sac essentially part of the library, because it's the same thing there. And I don't know that you want jurisdiction for there all the way down.
Well, all we do over there, actually, is just post that, all no parking, except for the handicapped.
Well, it's not like having... Do you physically use the parking lot in front of the school?
Yes.
On Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes. Turns into a model handicap.
That all, it's all posted?
So, we just take that one sentence out?
Well, but, but don't you say everything inside the fenced area?
It's, it's still... We do, but he's saying that we, we need to include, we're, we're saying inside the fenced area. Mr. Rose is saying that he needs the entire Ledgerd Center School, because the parking lot in front is his handicap parking lot.
Isn't that inside the fenced area?
No.
No, he's saying outside.
Well, no, he's saying the school, that's the problem, is the fence. Mr. Rose is saying that the fenced area that he's speaking of is the fence on Route 117, but the mayor's describing is the fenced area of the actual town green fair area.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, that's the problem.
The space in front of the school where you're parking is very similar to the Galesbury School and the high school. You have use of that. But, there's two things. We're talking about use, and we're talking, talking jurisdiction. Just like the Galesbury School and the high school parking lot, we are, we are giving you a lease for use of that, but you have no jurisdiction there. We're saying the same thing outside of your, your gate that you open and shut. You have use of that for parking and for access, but you don't have jurisdiction in that area. That's, that's the only issue.
Okay, I think we're, we're gonna confuse our insurance company right to the end.
Actually, did that, the lease agreement gives them the use of the Ledgerd Center School?
Yeah, right.
So, that includes that?
That, that's what we always...
Use. It's some use, not jurisdiction. But, that's what I'm saying. No, use is, use is what we're giving for the schools. What, what it says, and I'm gonna read to the speaker exactly, "With the building improvement there situated generally more than the playground, Paul O. Holden Pavilion, a Ledgerd Center School, a Ledgerd High School, and Galesbury and Juliette Long School..."
Yeah, that's how, that's what you're saying, Kevin.
Let's say, let's say in the parking lot. So, it gives you the parking lot.
It gives them the use of it, without the argument of who's got the jurisdiction. And the Fair Association's saying, "We pay her insurance on that property, so we want jurisdiction." And the mayor's saying, "So, they're not agreeing, who's got the jurisdiction?"
Well, why do they need jurisdiction? I mean, you have, you have the use of the parking lots. What, what jurisdiction do you need other than use? That's, that's what I'm confused.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Virginia Howard, 890 Colonel Highway. I run the admissions gates. I police them. If I have a loiterer outside my gate, I know that I have jurisdiction, permission from the sidewalk to my gate. So, if someone's hanging out suspiciously doing something that's not supposed to, I can at least tell them, "You can go to the sidewalk, but you're not gonna come in by my motorcycles or by my handicap parking, or by the people that are waiting to get into the fair."
And that's always been our understanding, because we have the police patrol of that area constantly.
Right. The police are gonna patrol me the way that...
Right. The, the thing is, is that what I'm a little concerned about is that, insurance-wise, for one thing, because right now, our insurance company is under the interpretation that, right, we leased those entire grounds for our use. Now, if something happens there, somebody's gonna have to explain to me, right, how are we gonna get...
It just sounds like, it just sounds like there's an overlap of insurance, not, I mean, you could say the same thing, and we just talked about the, we just talked about the middle school and the Galesbury School. That's a huge property.
I understand, because these, these are the things that we have to...
It just sounds like there might be some overlap of, of that.
Well, there, there may be, but at the same time, if something happens, right, we're trying to protect ourselves if anybody comes up with a lawsuit. And who knows these days? And our insurance company, I mean, they're, they're tough.
Okay, I was, I was hoping to not, to not get into this particular issue if I could, but let me ask you a question. What type of activities that are regulated in that area?
In front of the school?
Yeah, in, in that driveway. What type of activities are...
Well, that's mostly all handicap parking.
No, no, no. What type of activities will be regulated in that area?
No actual activities.
So, anyone could do anything that they can do today at the time of the fair?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, pretty, pretty much. Not everything.
Okay. I don't think that's anything legal.
So, so what if we describe this administrative control to include the fenced area of Ledgerd Center School as well as...
I think it already does, because the word in the lease typically says...
It's important.
Well, no, if somebody said, "All the words are described in Exhibit A," you would have a copy of Exhibit A. You would answer this question.
Excuse me, we're still in a public hearing, so everybody who wants to talk needs to say who they are and what their address is, and then talk. This is not a council meeting.
State your name.
Mike France, 17 Gardron. Kevin's comment. Exhibit A, I presume is the map that describes the area, is that correct?
No, Exhibit A, Exhibit A is, is the, the things that we provide.
Yeah. It's just a list, there's no maps.
So, it's not a map of the area?
No.
No.
It's not described, I didn't know what it was.
Right, no.
So, there is no map that describes the area defined?
Well, and, and there's more than one fence over there, so the word, use of the word fence is, is vague. But, so the real question that I'm hearing is, it basically, it comes down to, when you get outside of where the admission gate is, who's responsible for policing activity out there? Is it the town, or is it the Fair Committee?
It is me.
Well, I understand you've made clear what you think it is. I'm talking about what is it under the lease? It's, it's still our property, so we're, this is...
For the past, for the past 11 years, it's been me.
I understand that.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I'm the one that chooses whether or not somebody's handicap parking, who comes through the gate, whatever. They're obnoxious if they're drinking. I don't want them to be able to come up to the gate and do whatever they want. If I have the power to say, "Go back to the, you wanna be here, fine, go to the, go to the sidewalk," because I know that under Lou and the lease and the property, we're to that snow fence that we put up every year.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is that right now, we don't have a meeting of the minds, okay? We own the property, you're the, you're gonna lease it. This is a contract. We have to agree on what it means, and right now, we don't agree. So, I, that, that is your position? We didn't get that from the mayor. So, we gotta work through that, and we gotta work through it before we vote on it later on in the meeting, or later on at the regular council meeting. Mr. France, you just need to speak again.
Mike France, 17 Gardron. I guess my issue with the position that you have is it's not consistent at all gates. You don't have the same position in the cul-de-sac. You don't take all the way out to the street or move people out to a boundary, the boundary is at the gate. So, it's inconsistent at different entrances to the gate, so it's difficult to understand to the town to be consistent where the boundary of the property is, and the same consistent rules apply at entrance to the fair. The front entrance, you say, is all the way out to the street, but the cul-de-sac is at the gates.
Yeah, because of the bus. The buses come in there and sort.
But, you have the same people coming to that location, and you could have the same incidents. You're saying that in front of the school, you can tell them to move out to the street or to the sidewalk, away from the gate, but you don't have that same authority, or you're not stating that you want that authority in the cul-de-sac. So, I would argue that it should be consistent in both places, and that the boundary is at the gate, and the police of Ledgerd are responsible for good or in discipline in the areas outside of it.
Mr. Song?
Bill Song, 333 Upkingle Road. So, there's a sidewalk on that circle that goes, it actually starts at Ledgerd Center School. It runs up in front of the library, if I'm not mistaken, there's fence that kind of follows that sidewalk. Then the sidewalk runs down to Ray Holden Circle. So, my question is, if a bus pulled up or a person just walked into where, where the bus is parked in that circle, and let's say they're drunk and disorderly, would you tell them, "Go down to the street," or would you let them stay in the circle?
Leslie Jo Kohler, 21th Lane. It may not have specified specifically in the lease that we police it to the end of the road or the end of that cul-de-sac where the library and the church meet, but we have controlled that property as far as we're concerned. We keep no parking through there, we make sure that there are signs listed. We use that typically just for the buses to drop everybody off or emergency vehicles to come through or whatever, and then we leave just the side where the library is open, obviously, for the library guests. So, we have, whether it is the terms of the lease or not, we have policed that, and we have made sure that we do right to the road. So, if there's any problems that arise in that area, we do ask people or groups of people to move out to the end of the, the end of that. Even though there isn't a specific sidewalk there, we ask them to go to the curb, go to the end of the drive. So, that is how we police that. The same as we do with Fairway Drive in the back, the dirt, well, Gate 4, excuse me, where we come in there, we ask them the same thing. They're not allowed to come in and approach on that space if anybody is there disorderly. We ask them to go to the road. Same thing happens with the entrance to the church, sanctuary entrance there. Obviously, the road is right there, and our gate is right there on the road, but we do the same thing, they have to be on the sidewalk. So, there's no entrance into those areas, there's no approaching upon those areas. So, it may not have specified in the lease that those property lines were what we used, but that's what we have been using as our property line.
Eric Gilbert? See, like we're, we're saying the road, isn't it the Ledgerd Police that are going to be doing the enforcement in some capacity? Anyhow, I mean, you guys don't have bouncers or guys that are gonna go out and take care of people. It's gonna need the Ledgerd Police. So, it seems to me that whatever the boundaries are, what we need to agree on is what that enforcement is going to be. I don't, I don't know that it's the actual boundary that matters as much as the enforcement of the activity that matters.
If I may, we're not talking about the legal activities.
Agreed.
Talking about activities that are normal, activities that someone could use. We're talking about activities that are normal, activities that someone could use, but would be restricted in those areas at the time of the fair. For instance, I'll give an example, handing out literature. It seems to be permitted at, on the library side, but not on the other side.
Okay, because drunken disorderly is not handing out literature.
So that's not, that's not, that's not an illegal activity, it's not something the police would interfere with. That's not the issue. It's just a matter of jurisdiction, that, that's all.
Then again, I, I think the matter is agreeing on what activities will be enforced.
In, in the interest of time, this, this chairman, I'd rather not pursue this, I'm fine with putting the language back in there for the, the drive. By the drive, you mean the, basically that first, or you mean the, the driver that goes around the school, the horseshoe? What's, is that, is it the whole, that, it's, oh, I'm sorry, you already said it's everything inside the sidewalk. Okay, for, for my standpoint, I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor this, I think the fair committee has done an excellent job of, of, you know.
We, we try to police all our areas.
I understand that, I understand. That's fine, I can see putting those words back in there where it says, with the exception of the driveway leading to Ledger Center School. I think the fair committee has been very reasonable, I'm sure that any issues that come up could be resolved, so, you know, that can be changed.
We can change that.
That's, I'm sorry?
We can change that.
Yeah, we can change that, yes.
Now, can I try again?
Try what?
Push.
We were this close, not too long ago, that close. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? Since we opened the door back up, hearing, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing.